It being the appointed hour, I would like to call this meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Education to order, and we will begin with information from our interpreters. Yes.
Good afternoon. I have a brief bilingual message that will first be said in Spanish and then repeated in English. Buenos tardes. Mi nombre es Regina Santos Moreno, y estoy aquí con mi colega Hugo Santos para proporcionar acceso lingüístico a través de interpretación simultánea. Si nos están acompañando en línea a través de Zoom en computadora, tengo unas guías para que puedan acompañarnos en español. Si nos están acompañando en computadora o en PC, verá un icono en forma de globo en la parte inferior derecha de su pantalla que dice "Interpretación". Haga clic ahí, seleccione español, y haga clic en Done. Si está usando la aplicación de Zoom en un iPad, tableta, o teléfono, busque el menú de tres puntos en la parte superior derecha de su pantalla, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas", elige español, y haga clic en Done. Si ustedes bilingüe, no tiene que presionar nada. Les recordamos a los oradores que hablen uno a la vez y a un paso moderado. También, si nos están acompañando en persona y necesitan interpretación, por favor de hacernoslo saber, porque tenemos unos dispositivos aquí disponibles para que nos puedan acompañar en español. So, good afternoon. As I just said in Spanish, my name is Regina Santos Moreno, and I am here with my colleague Hugo Santos, providing language access through simultaneous interpretation between English and Spanish. So if you are bilingual and you are joining us via Zoom online, you do not have to press anything, but if you are joining us on Zoom, on a computer, on a laptop, you should look for the globe icon on the bottom right of your screen that says "Interpretación" and select "English", so that you may follow along in the correct language channel. If you are using Zoom application on an iPad, or your phone, or a tablet, locate the three-dot menu on the top right of your screen, click on "Language Interpretation", and then select "English" and "Done". We'd like to remind our speakers to please speak one at a time and at a moderate pace. And also, if you are joining us in person in need of interpretation, we do have some listening devices available for you to be able to do so. Just let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Porter, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
So on this day of celebration, before we say the pledge, let's remember that later this month is Memorial Day, and today, as we salute our flag, we also salute all of those who fell in the service our country. May they ever be remembered. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porter. And now we'll do roll call. Mrs. Dany. Mrs. DeWort.
Here.
Ms. Ehrman.
Here.
Mrs. Frost.
Here.
Mr. Howell.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Present.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll go into item five, which is changes to the agenda. As you know by the email that was sent out, the inter-district transfer appeal has been pulled, although we may have a discussion about one part of... It's on. Okay. There may be one part... Third time's a charm? Yes? Okay, thank you. But when we get to that item, there still be an aspect of it we would like to discuss, not having to do with the specifics of the case, but of inter-district transfers. So we'll leave the item number on the agenda, although it will not be in inter-district appeal. President and Board comments. First of all, since last month, Mr. Howell ditched us. He took away an opportunity for us before the event to congratulate... Good, good. You thought you were going to get away without being recognized.
Recognition program called Hancock Honors Night, and the first one will be held September the 9th in the new Performing Arts Center. And we just announced yesterday the three honorees this year, and they're from the three different valleys that the college serves. Patty Boyd, who left a $12 million request from her estate to help build that facility. There's also money earmarked for the Performing Arts Center. And so she's being recognized posthumously. And Stevenson is also being recognized. She was extremely instrumental in getting the Lumphoek Campus up and running and seeing the Performing Arts Center get started. And the third one is an alumni who has a jazz band up in the Bay Area, but he centers on students at risk, and he goes out and does outreach in the schools. And so we'll be bringing him and his band in for about a week prior to the event to visit the schools and just get back in the community. And he was a double graduate of PCPA, both the technical side and the acting side. Okay, I've said enough.
Yes, please, and is this working now? Again, another hat. I'm in the American Legion also, and I'd like to recognize the students of San Yenés High School, who every year come out to decorate the graves of the over 1,000 veterans who are buried in the various cemeteries in the San Yenés Valley. It's mostly the football team and the National Honor Society, but every year, 100 kids come out on a day off over a three-day weekend at 9:00 on a Saturday morning and give their time to salute those who served our country. So it's a great event, and today we have the superintendent and principal, so I say thank you for having such great kids.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to go back to the Joe Howell as Person of the Year item that we kind of just touched on earlier. I just wanted to commend Joe in his acceptance speech in true-to-form collaborative fashion. He recognized so many people that had a hand in what we all look at as his success, but he wanted that to be a shared moment. And I just thought, my gosh, this man is so fiercely dedicated to bringing people together. It was a pleasure, and it was also instructional, and I think everyone in the room felt that very collaborative spirit in which Joe acknowledged the things he was involved in. And we're just so lucky to have him on this board. So I just wanted to tip my nonexistent hat to you, Joe. It was really, really done in such great form. Thanks. My pleasure.
Thank you, and good afternoon, all. I have four comments. Board activity. On April 15th, I attended the CCB Board of Directors Meeting Retreat in Sacramento, and CCBE is California Counties Boards of Education. All county board members that were representing all regions across the state attended, and a facilitator assisted us with a strategic and legislative action planning, including support for AB 906 to stabilize funding for juvenile courts and community schools. And also, CCBE's annual conference, just want to let everybody know, for our board members is set for the weekend of September 10th, and it's going to be in Monterey. Two weeks ago, I attended virtually a Joint Assembly Budget Subcommittee hearing chaired by Assembly Member Kevin McCarty and Assembly Member Mia Bonta regarding AB 906. There was a panel that provided an overview of education in county juvenile education correctional facilities. The hearing was very informative, with multiple knowledgeable representatives on the panel, and it was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. I also spoke publicly during the public comment. I had one minute in support of AB 906. And Susan is mentioning this in her report, but we just discussed that I was going to mention what actually happened to AB 906. This became a two-year bill as a result of really detailed questions by the assembly members and the budget committee, and it's going to be taken up in January to resolve these outstanding issues and questions. The legitimate concerns were regarding transparency and accountability for juvenile court and community schools. The legislator understands that districts and counties are less understood... Or district, wait, that districts are more understood than county offices. And the legislature is deeply concerned with the group of the most vulnerable students, which are students. And something happened that never happened before with this issue, is that the... This is the first time that we had such a collaborative group of people, of elected officials, working together in support for a county office issue. And this is the first time that there were site visits across the state by various assembly members. This is the first time we had resolutions passed, including our county board, and it was the first time that elected county board members and elected superintendents attended these hearings and elevated this issue. Given that it's become a two-year bill now, we have more time to really work on building coalitions and continue to educate and build support for funding of this investment. And everyone did a wonderful job getting us here. So thank you, everyone, for passing that resolution, and Susan for bringing it to us. And then last week, I just wanted to inform everybody, I counted... As a county board member, there is a circulating letter along, and it's circulating among county board members and district board members across the state in support of SB 691. And that's a bill that's authored by State Senator Portantino, and it's K through 2, universal screening for risk of dyslexia. The letter of support will be sent to the CSBA Legislative Action Committee. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And at this point, we do have... At this point, we do have a request for public comment, and I believe it's Sherry Ray. Sherry, are you here? Come on up to the microphone.
That would be better. Okay. Hi, my name is Sherry Ray. I'm the director of the Dyslexia Project, and I'm a literacy advocate. And usually, when I come and speak, and I haven't been here for quite some time, I script my comments, and today I just want to speak from the heart. I want to tell you about something that happened in a local school when I went, did a visit as the dyslexia lady, which I've done in our local schools many times, and I gave the presentation this time to fourth graders. And I did it for four different classes, and after the last presentation, a little boy came up to me and looked at me, his big brown eyes, and he just said, "I can't read", a fourth grader, almost a fifth grader. And thankfully, his teachers and I were able to communicate. We got ahold of the mom. I have a friend who's an educational therapist who's willing to do some help. We're working with this child, but I want to... I just want to talk about how we teach our children to read. And this is an issue across the country, in our county, in our districts. This balanced literacy approach, which this child has received, it doesn't work for about 60% of kids. And I'm asking for this organization to please take a look, possibly listen to a wonderful podcast called "Sold a Story" by an absolute hero, Emily Hanford, who's done a great deal of research and investigative reporting on this issue. It'll give you the whole background about why this has happened, how it's happened over time, and what we can do to change. What we need to do is make the switch from balanced literacy to what's called structured literacy, which is based on thousands of scientific researched reports and documentation about how the brain learns to read. And I think we can do this. I know we can. We're creative, and we're collaborative, and our kids really need us to do that. And just, you know, we have a little program at our Dyslexia Project. We call it "Literacy is for Everyone", and it is. And this child's going to get some help, but it's going to take a lot for him to be able to read. His mom reports that he cries every night, and he feels like the dumbest kid in class. The educational therapist who worked with him one time said he had, she had him working, based on a scientific approach, saying words, reading words, learning the sounds, and speaking the word, turning the words and the sounds backwards. So he's able to do it if he gets the right instruction. And we know from our assessments that we have a serious literacy issue, as is the case across the country. And I just really want to be a resource, if you like. I have tons of resources. You have my contact information, and I think we can do a better job. Thank you.
Sherry Ray. And at this point, we have some recognitions to take care of. The Santa Barbara County Classified School Employees of the Year recognition. And I believe each board member... Each board member is going to make a remark, but we're going to start with our superintendent, Susan Salcedo, to begin the festivities.
Oh, my goodness. Good afternoon, everyone. It is so wonderful to see all of you, and welcome to the County Board of Education meeting. And to all the honorees and your and our special guests, thank you so much for being here. To the County Board of Education, thank you so much for prioritizing this recognition on your agenda today. It's such an honor to be recognizing six very special individuals. And to our amazing SB CEO team who are here today, thank you for being here. As Mrs. Frost, Madam Chair, Frost said just a moment ago, my name is Susan Salcedo. I serve as your Santa Barbara County Superintendent of Schools, and it's just my privilege and honor to be able to recognize and celebrate you today. I want to pause and say one more time the thanks for all of you for making the arrangements for being here to honor six very, very special individuals. Substitute plans, carpool plans, childcare plans, these are very complex changes, and we do that because these moments are very, very special for all of us. So thank you sincerely for making those arrangements to be here today. This afternoon, we have a very special opportunity to appreciate and elevate some of the most extraordinary educators and education staff in our county. This recognition comes at a most perfect time. Since this month, we celebrate some of the most, celebrate state and nationally recognized days and weeks, like Teacher Appreciation Week, which is next week, May 8 through 12, National School Nurse Day, May 10, National Speech Pathologist Day, May 18, and Classified School Employee Week, May 21 to 27. So we definitely have the right time. We definitely have the right place, and we most certainly have the right people right here in which to celebrate. First, for this recognition, we're going to celebrate our classified school employees who've been selected as our 2023 Santa Barbara County Classified Employees of the Year. And immediately following that presentation, we are going to raise the curtain again, roll the drumroll for our announcement, first-time public announcement of our 2024 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year. In Santa Barbara County, we have 125 public schools. So these six individuals we are recognizing this afternoon have been selected from all of them, six of 125 schools. Across California, this year's theme for Classified School Employees Week is about three I's: indispensable, inspiring, and invincible. That's the state's theme, and I think we would also add three Y's, which is yes, yes, and yes. Here are some of the ways classified employees impact our schools every day. Custodial and maintenance staff who keep our campuses safe and clean and beautiful and inviting, and set a tone and culture for learning and play. Bus drivers and transportation staff who carefully deliver our most precious cargo, our students from home and school and back again. Office staff who are ambassadors of schools and are liaisons to families and have superhuman abilities to remember everyone's names and birthdays who pass through their doors. Food service workers who know that every meal means so much to our students and their families. It's about nutrition continuity. It's definitely about breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And I would say, and I would submit, it's definitely a conversation starter for many families that goes like this. What'd you have for lunch today? What was, what did you have for snack? Very, very important. Technical staff who keep everyone connected and online. Para educators who support students and teachers in our classrooms. School safety personnel who keep our communities safe and secure. Classified staff are indispensable, inspiring, and invincible, and you deserve our thanks for ensuring students feel welcome, safe, nourished, and ready to learn. Before we spotlight each employee of the year and ask you to come up to this podium right here, I'd like to introduce just a few people who really work on supporting classified employees year-round. First, here as Santa Barbara County Personnel Commissioners, we have three, and the chair, Mike Ostini's here in person to celebrate you, Mike. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate you. We also have Personnel Commissioners Carmen Jaramillo and Gary Pikavitt online today, and again, really here to support each and every one of our classified employees year-round. I also would like to extend a big thanks to SB CEO, Director of Human Resources, Amy Ramos. So thank you, Amy. Amy coordinated this employee recognition program for classified employees in Santa Barbara County for us this year. And a very sincere thanks to all human resources staff, employees throughout Santa Barbara County. You have a lot on your shoulders, a huge lift, and we really thank you for all that you do. So now, let me please invite our County Board of Education trustees and honorees up to the podium. We'll call you up individually. And after we share about you, please know that they're going to invite you to say a few words here at the podium, just for a few words as well. So first to announce our first classified employee of the year, Maggie Dany.
Well, first of all, this is an exciting day. There's nothing more exciting than to be recognized for a job well done. But what I've learned through the Santa Barbara County offices is everybody here loves what they do. So it's got to be tough when you get down to the selection process in picking the employee of the year. So to start off, for the Santa Barbara County Classified Employee of the Year in the category of clerical and administrative, it is my pleasure to invite Kathleen Stevenson of the Orchid Union School District to join me here. If there were a center for all that happens in the Orchid Union School District's busy Los Alamos campus, it would be Kathleen Stevenson. Kathleen has served for seven years as the Office Manager for the two schools on the Orchid Union School District's Los Alamos campus, Oakley Reed School, and the Orchid Academy Charter Schools TK through 8 program, and SB CEO Special Day Class, and a Family Resource Center operated by a nonprofit organization, foundation, sorry. I'm quoting here, "Kathleen interacts daily with all visitors, assisting students and parents, welcoming substitute teachers, and fielding questions from neighbors." "Somehow she manages to manage and coordinate all of the activity on this bustling school site, and she does it with grace, warmth, and a genuine interest in helping," says Brenda Galvez, who works in the school office as a community liaison. "Kathleen cares about everyone." Kathleen, it's my pleasure to present you with your certificate as a classified employee of the year.
My hands are sweaty. All right. Mine, too. Good afternoon, friends. I work on a campus of a school that was founded in 1879. I haven't worked there that long, although after two and a half years of COVID, I might look like it. I am part of a small but mighty team of people servicing students, family, and community members at a TK through 8, one neighborhood school, and one charter. I am grateful to be recognized for this, in this capacity, but I am keenly aware that I would not be here if it wasn't for the help of the people around me who help me with the work. I've spent some time reflecting on this honor and wondering what tipped the scale for me. I'll be frank, I'm over 50, so I won't feign modesty. I rock my job. Okay. But so do a lot of people that I work with on a daily and weekly basis. I coordinate on my site and in my district. So why me? Could it be that I navigate dual cultures between two schools all day? Or is it the drive-throughs that I did through COVID where I had to get supplies and materials to students, yet worry about keeping both equipment and... to students, yet worry about keeping both equipment and staff members out of the 95-degree heat? Perhaps it's because I build relationships with students on my campsite campsits so that I might be the only one that can talk them out of the tree? Or finally, maybe it's that I can effectively run a school office in a power outage with my cellphone and a flashlight? Then my inner voice laughs and says, none of those, Kathleen. Remember when your entire office caught COVID? The superintendent covered your desk along with the assistant superintendent. So my guess is that's probably why I'm sitting here. But seriously though, this job provides more than a paycheck. Not the least of which is the satisfaction that every day we are helpers. We make someone else's life easier. And on really good days, we might make it life-changing. We do good work. In closing, thank you to my fellow staff members who make the best days better and the hard days tolerable, to the executive staff of my district, who felt I was worthy enough to be nominated, to my husbands and my daughters, who have donated, who have donated time to my campus when I needed the most help. Thank you to you for working to recognize the work of class staff. Thank you.
Let me invite to the podium trustee Michelle DeWort.
Hey, good afternoon. I am here to honor the custodial and maintenance person from Lompoc Unified School District. His name is Herc Heng, and he cannot be here today. So Herc Heng is going to be represented today by his supervisor, Samuel Blanton. And we are not sure if Samuel is here today. Okay, so we're going to talk about Herc. Herc has served as the groundskeeper at Leonora Fillmore Elementary School for the past five years. He ensures that school grounds are kept safe, clean, and beautiful. The Fillmore staff said, Hank is the, Heng is the reason why students and staff walk onto the campus feeling proud of where they learn and work. His commitment to our school shows through the inviting areas he has created through the, throughout the campus. We want to thank, we want to thank Herc Heng for serving our children, and we hope we get to see him soon.
We will make sure that Herc receives his certificate. We'll send him a recording of the message here today, and Michelle, your words will be sent right to him along with this as well. Next, I'd like to invite Joe Howell, trustee. Thank you.
Maria Charco, join me up here, please. Maria here? This is the toughest part because everybody's staring at you with big smiles. Maria is being recognized in the area of food nutrition, in the food nutrition services. She's been a food services assistant at La Cumbre Junior High School for seven years. She contributes to the daily preparation of food, especially scratched, scratch-cooked meals, and serves students with excellent customer service. Maria's colleagues remarked that she's a great team player who always goes the extra mile for students. Her team said the following, quote, "Maria is a great asset to the department and deserves any and all accolades." Maria, all of us in this room today want to thank you for your service, appreciate your being here today with your cheering section. Where's the cheering section for Maria? I've, I've got to admit, this is a prepared script, and I thought, what if there's no cheering section? Very good. Let me invite you to share a few words.
Hello, I, um, nervous. I'm thankful the person who nominated me, it's something that, um, something that I didn't expect. I really enjoy my job. I really enjoy my job because at the end of the, and at the end of the day, you make smile to the kids, like you share their love to them. And I really love my job all seven years, thanks to the food service who have been supporting me and believe that I'm here, like, I, still at the moment, I don't, I can't believe that I'm here. And I'm really thankful because like, I'm always just giggling and doing so many things. And I just laugh for every single thing. But I really enjoy my job because I think you do your job with love, and at the end of the day, you like, people are looking at you, the students are looking at you, like you try to do your perfect things. So the little kids look at you and say, oh, wow, like, you know? Then I try to, to do my best because at the end of the day, you're on the stage and people are looking at you, at least you don't see they're looking at you, but you are being watched by every single student, like how you do your, your work, if you're doing it right or not. So you try to make your, every single day to move, to learn new things. And you're like, supported by your supervisor. I'm really thankful for my fellow, Matthew over there, he's been supporting me every time he needs something that I need. And I really love my job and even working with my coworkers at La Cumbre Junior High. And I'm really thankful for this reward, and I expect to do more than this. I was gonna say, thank you. And I'm thankful for my parents and my husband who are coming and supporting me over here.
I'd like to invite now Bruce Porter, please, to the podium. Thank you.
These kind of days are always so awesome when we see how blessed our children and families and communities are to have wonderful employees. But we have to take the time to slow down and recognize it. And it's great that we are able to do that today. So in the area of health and student services, it's my pleasure to recognize Norma Flores of the Lompoc Unified School District. Norma, who is joining us through the magic of electrons on Zoom today, has dedicated almost 23 years to Leonora Fillmore Elementary School and the surrounding community, and has served as a homeschool community liaison for 11 years. In her current role, she organizes the, and this is a long list, so it's a lot of work, the Student Study Team, the Parent Teacher Association, the Fillmore English Learner Advisory Committee, and School Site Council meetings, in addition to attending and interpreting meetings for students who require individual education plans. Her team at Fillmore showered her with praise, saying, and I quote, "Norma puts all staff members and families at ease with her approachable demeanor. She always has a smile on her face, and we can see that right here, is willing to do anything needed, and creates a positive feeling in our office," unquote. Norma, thank you for joining us today, and an even bigger thank you for all that you do for students, families, and our community. And again, through the magic of Zoom, I invite you to say a few words. And oh, by the way, those balloons behind you are awesome.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, thank you. I am not there in person, but my dura sagama calls me as I came to meet my second granddaughter. And it is so special to share this recognition with my grandbabies and my family. And here is the little one. That's why we have decorations. And yeah, it is a privilege to help our students and families connect with our school and build community support. I also would like to thank all my coworkers and my family for all their support. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
So Norma, again, on behalf of all the communities that you serve, thank you so
And Norma, thank you for being with us online. We'll make sure that you get this certificate in your hands, and congratulations on the beautiful family that's standing, are sitting right next to you today. Congratulations. And with that, let's invite Mary Beth Carty to the podium.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Salcedo and Amy for inviting us, board members, to take part in this ceremony. It's really so heartening and one of our favorite tasks, recognizing our incredible staff at KMEED. So last but certainly not least, I'd like to invite Diane Campo from Lompoc Unified. We are recognizing Diane in the area of paraprofessional services. Diane has served 16 years in her role as a special education paraprofessional in the Los Barros Visual and Performing Arts Academy. She provides support to students with autism as they participate in general education classrooms, ensuring that their instructional, behavioral, and social needs are met. Her colleagues shared with us that Mrs. Campo is a true team player. She knows her responsibilities as a special education paraeducator, and will do whatever needs to be done to meet the needs of the students that she supports. Another quoted saying, we are very fortunate to have her as part of our Los Barros team. Congratulations, Diane, on this well-deserved recognition. How does it feel to be recognized by your contributions?
Thank you so much, Santa Barbara County Education Office, for this recognition. I am truly honored. I'll probably cry, I'm such a crier. So sorry. And thank you so much for this honor. I know it would be such a hard choice because there are so many wonderful paras out there. I know because I work with them all. Thank you so much, Mrs. Evans, for the nominations, this nomination coming from you is the biggest honor ever. Your leadership is just amazing, and it has trickled down to every single one of us on a very large staff in a little town school. So thank you so much. I love my job. I love it. Every day when I'm driving to work with two of my children and my granddaughters, it is just the best feeling to show up at work and, by the way, I made a decision a long time ago, to show up with a smile and a positive attitude, because I really do love working with kids, and I really love my staff. The team of people that I work with is absolutely amazing, coming from leadership all the way down to every single position on campus. And I am absolutely just the luckiest person ever. And I'm just really very, very grateful. So thank you to everyone here. Thank you for my daughter for coming just for me today. I really appreciate you being here, and I love you so much.
There is a website, an app, a program called Wordle you may have heard of, where you could put in words, and it'll create a word cloud, and it'll have a beautiful picture of all of the words that have been spoken the most. And I think if we had a Wordle for just a moment ago, I think we'd hear love, they love you, you love the, what work that you do, the dedication, I mean, the gratefulness. We, we celebrate you sincerely. And I want to, again, thank all of you, all, all of you, for your incredible dedication and your commitment and your service. And earlier today, we paused to say thanks for everyone who came with you to celebrate you. And I just want to take a moment to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna categorize just in two. One is family members, family members and friends who are not your school colleagues. Just gonna ask you, if you wouldn't mind, why don't you stand so we could see you, see who came today, any of, or all of the five, friends, families, non-colleagues who came today to celebrate those individuals? Daughters and siblings, I see, and parents as well, thank you very much for, for being here. And now our, our colleagues across the county. We have principals here, we've got supervisors here, we have a superintendent here, Dr. Holly Eads from Orchid. I'd really love if you all, colleagues, supervisors, coworkers that have, are part of the nominees and honorees here today, if you wouldn't mind, please stand. Thank you. I would like to say, as we culminate the Classified Employee Recognition part, and we're going right into the Teacher of the Year recognition, as we stay, we all stay for both of those announcements, if you would please join me in a Santa Barbara County round of applause for our 2023 Classified Employees of the Year. Congratulations. So as we now shift our recognition and announcements, I do want to give just a bit of direction for, for everybody. And this is for honorees and your guests here as well, so friends as, as well as colleagues. So we want to, as Luis Medina, who's phenomenal at capturing our events, he and Kami Barnwell, Director of Communications, we want to help formalize the celebration today with a few photos. So after the Teacher of the Year recognition and announcement, we'll ask for two photos right here in the, right here in the center of the room, and that will be for the, all of those who've received a recognition today. So the classified as well as Teacher of the Year will stay right here, we'll have a few board photos. I have a feeling the board may take a recess while the second photo will be out into the courtyard. You'll follow Kami Barnwell and Luis, and that is for the, those of you who've received a recognition today, as well as your guests. So we want to make sure that you, we have photos of you. All right, so we'll take one photo here, and then you'll go right out to the courtyard. And now, the curtain, the drum roll. It is my distinct honor to announce our 2024 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year. Being selected for the Teacher of the Year is one of education's highest honors and also one of its highest responsibilities. This individual is asked to be our county's representative for all teachers, to be an ambassador of education, and to amplify the profession of education for the artful and skillful, intellectual, physical, and emotional, and undeniably critical role that it is. This year's Teacher of the Year is no exception. He was chosen through a very rigorous application process by a diverse selection committee, which included educators, administrators, business community, County Board of Education Trustee, this year Nadra Erman, thank you for serving, as well as our 20 trustee, this year Nadra Erman, thank you for serving, as well as our 2023 Teacher of the Year, Joanna Hendricks. I want to say thank you so much for the, for the selection process and um, team committee. Uh, Stephen Keithley, our Director of Teacher Programs and Support, and Anne Flores, your incredible assistant, and all of the, the team to make this very important selection process be as a... Be as, I guess it is as important as it is, you make that process important as well. Steve and Anne, would you please stand so we can see you? Thank you. As a matter of general information, our 2023 Teacher of the Year, Joanna Hendricks, remains our Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year for the rest of this calendar year. And by the way, Joanna Hendricks contacted Stephen Keithley today to say, "Good luck today. I'm so excited. I'll be watching. Can't wait to hear the announcement of 2024." Today's announcement of our 2024 Teacher of the Year allows time for this year's winner to complete all of the required elements to send to the California Department of Education for consideration for California Teacher of the Year. Before inviting our teacher up to the podium, I'd like to share a little bit of background about him with all of you. From our 2024 Teacher of the Year's own words, quote, "I have been in love with history ever since I have visited the Gettysburg Battlefield in Pennsylvania while in fourth grade. Through the years, I increasingly discovered that my love of history could only be matched, if not exceeded, by my passion for sharing that love with others. It is an absolute thrill," he says, "when I'm able to play some, some small role in sparking the engaged interest and curiosity of another in some fascinating historical person, event, or phenomenon." And he goes on to say, "By young adulthood, I had decided that I wanted to participate in a career that adds meaning to the lives of others in some, some small way. I had many inspirational teachers in which I, uh, teachers during my years as a student who in turn inspired me to pursue a career in education in which I could support, mentor, and inspire young minds. Taken together, my love of history, passion for sharing and collaborating with others, and my drive to contribute to society by supporting and mentoring others are the three main factors that brought me to the teaching profession." An educator for ten years, our Teacher of the Year, was a history major at UC Santa Barbara, earned his first master's degree in history from the University of South Carolina, then returned for his teaching credential and second master's degree in education from UC Santa Barbara. So without further delay, it is my honor to announce our 2024 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year, Social Sciences Teacher at the San Ynez Valley Union High School, Greg Wolfe. And as part of this process, I'm gonna say a few more words about, right about you, to you. Mariah, okay, good. As part of this process, we get a chance to learn about our finalists as well as our Teacher of the Year. So what we have learned about Greg, and I'm gonna, like I said, talk about you right here, right in front of you, is that you're beloved and appreciated and known as the go-to person for just about everything. In one colleague's words, quote, "Greg is truly the full package when it comes to embodying the soul of an outstanding educator," unquote. Colleague Chris Mullen, who's here today, former Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year, and then went on to be our California State Teacher of the Year, um, said, quote, "In addition to teaching students, Greg is a highly respected leader and trusted guide amongst their teaching peers. Within our department, Greg is the undisputed heartbeat, and he's never more at home than when he's co-planning some sort of activity or parallel of instruction technique with another teacher. On breaks, we all congregate in Greg's room, swapping jokes and successful lessons with one another. His room is a place of collegial laughter and a welcome respite from those occasionally challenging days of high school teaching," unquote. When asked to put words to his own teaching philosophy, Greg said, quote, "I believe that relationships come first. Emotional well-being is crucial, and my class needs to be a safe place where all students feel seen and heard. My classroom experience is designed to put students at the center of everything. I aim to give students ownership of their own learning with the goal of facilitating engagement, development of critical thinking skills, and creativity, and a sense of accomplishment and fulfillment that they will hope, that will hopefully fuel every student's desire to pursue success in their own lives beyond the classroom." Mr. Wolfe teaches US History, Political Science, and Advanced Placement Psychology. He facilitated a successful student-led effort to bring and then teach the first Advanced Placement Psychology to your campus. He's been the History Department Chair for seven years, is a Vice President of the Parent-Teacher-Student Association, and has served as the Activities Director for the Associated Student Body for six years. And before we hear from you, to lay that even further, I'd love to invite our County Board Trustee, Nadra Erman, who is part of the committee here um, this year, to say a few words about your experience, and speak about you in front of you. All right. Are you ready for me to speak about you in front of you? Okay, great. So it was such an honor to be on the selection committee process and to see all of the educators and their different environments and that passion that everyone had. And what stood out really, Greg, because as you could imagine, how difficult that decision must be, but your vision. You know, Greg really has this vision and as Susan spoke to that, your initial passion for history was amplified to your passion to make a difference and really connect and have that relationship with the students that you engage. And the vision that you have, not only for that engagement and that relationship, but for the future of education and how uh, we need to be able to amply equip the, the children and the youth for their future. And your passion for that, your vision around that, your shared vision that you have with your other colleagues and how to articulate that and bring that to a larger platform with something as the, as the committee individually and as a whole, we, that really spoke to the ethos of what the Teacher of the Year is all about. And so to see you interact with your class, to see the class setup and, you know, for high schoolers, you know, you really have to be able to have a certain amount of cool in order to really get to them. And you could see that in your class and how you had um, you know, the posters on the wall and the, the materials and, and how you interacted. And you really um, gave them a sense of ownership and, and authority over their education. And at that age and, and their development, it is so important because their next step is going to be out there in the world making their own decisions, being able to really analyze and critically uh, be aware of all of the stimuli and that they're um, surrounded with. So I just wanted to say thank you for your passion, thank you for your dedication, thank you for being able to expand your vision and constantly learn and grow and adapt to what's needed. And as I was sitting there listening to all of um, the accolades um, uh, that Susan was mentioning, uh, and this is going to um, mainly speak a little bit about my um, my background, but I love music and I think that you, you do too and you could relate. And so there is a album from the seventies by Stevie Wonder called Songs in the Key of Life, and you know that, and the song "As," and there's a, a quote in that song that says, "Kindness knows no shame." And that really resonated with me and it really, in terms of your work and how that amplifies the work of all of the teachers and how you can hold that space for your vision, your shared vision, and all the teachers and educators in our community. So thank you. And to share some comments from our board chair, here's Judy Frost.
Congratulations, Gary. I have a soft spot in my heart for San Ynez High School because my husband uh, spent some time there. And about a decade, I think, uh, and in many different roles. And it's certainly wonderful to see a teacher like you who's inspiring our youth and preparing them to go out in the world with some skills that they really need. Being able to think through processes and evaluate things and listen, it's, it's um, commendable indeed. So while I want to say congratulations, of course, for your selection, I also, as Nadra said, want to thank you very much for the work you do in your classroom and for helping your students, our students, our future be more well-equipped at taking care of us in the future. So thank you so much. I'd like to present you with the plaque in recognition of exemplary service to students, staff, and community, Gregory Wolfe, Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year 2024. And I'm sure you have a couple of things you'd like to say.
All right, this is intense. So first of all, thank you, Dr. Salsito, the board, the entire SB CEO staff, of course. Uh, this is a great honor to receive the award. Deeply moved uh, by the generosity of the selection committee. I'm sure it was a difficult choice. Uh, it feels good uh, to be recognized for, for the work that I do, which is predominantly driven every morning by a question I ask myself, which is, what can I do today to ensure that the experience of all of my students today is meaningful and positive? Uh, and really, I believe that um, for all people in education, if that's sort of what drives us, then everything else will kind of work itself out, right? So I accept the award on behalf of all of us who do that um, every day. So thank you. This is a hard job. Uh, the kids, there's a lot of personal sacrifice and such, we all know that. Uh, the kids make it worth it. Uh, and I wouldn't trade this job for anything. The kids at San Ynez High School are particularly special, uh, and I feel blessed to have had the opportunity to work with them for the last nine years. And uh, I wouldn't trade it for anything. So in closing, I just want to thank a couple of people, so it takes a village, of course, and there's many more, but uh, the members of my village who are here uh, have all been an important part of this journey that I'm on. So I want to thank my mom, Debbie, my wife, my wife Erin, who's also an educator. Uh, she does the littles, elementary school. Uh, and then uh, my superintendent, Andrew Schwab. Our amazing principal, who has had a huge impact on changing the direction of my pedagogy in good ways, Mr. Michael Niehoff. Thanks for the nomination also. Uh, and then a couple of longtime mentors, colleagues, friends, Chris Mullen, one of my current colleagues, uh, and Julie Esterbrook, who used to work at San Ynez, uh, but was my advisor in my credential program. So thank you. Thank you all. Thank you much.
I wanted to uh, turn the microphone over to any of our county board members who may want to say a word or two while Greg is standing right here. So let's turn it over to you.
I was on the board of the uh, high school district when you first showed up, some nine or 10 years ago. What, you were definitely wet behind the ears, but you were, and I say that in a good way, but you were so excited to be there and I could see in your eyes that you were in the right place at the right time. And uh, I, I am so proud of you, what you've done for our kids and our community, uh, not just in the classroom, but in all those extracurricular activities, which really add value to our kids' lives and add stickiness between the school and the uh, and the kids. So Greg, congratulations. I am so personally proud of you.
Join my colleagues, I, all of us are, we're, we're just so gratified that there are people like you that choose this profession and stick with it and bring so much joy, the joy of discovery and connectedness and inclusion in your classrooms and that you connect the outer world, the experiential elements with pedagogy and, and academics and together that rigor. Uh, it's, it's showing up in students. We heard from a member of your school at our last meeting, and there's a lot of uh, leadership and history is such a great platform with which to teach all about the world. So I just want to thank you. It's, it's wonderful to see a male in the profession and keep shining the light. Thank you so much.
Mr. Wolfe, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
How did it feel when you got, received that phone call, the voice of Stephen Keithley on one end, calling you and saying, "This is it. You're our 2024 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year."
Yeah, so, so again, it was, it was intense. It was crazy. Uh, very surreal, uh, but also kind of funny because so uh, TG Barry, who I was, he was a mentor, he got distinguished new educator a couple of years ago. Now a colleague teaches right next door to me, so when he called me, or I called him back, I was outside, like in the field behind our classrooms. And the first thing he did was run outside while I'm talking to Steve, like, "Did you get it? Did you get it?" So. That helped take the edge off that.
Very, very good. Well, Mr. Wolfe, along with uh, many colleagues from across Santa Barbara County, will be introduced at the education celebration that we were speaking of earlier on May 11th and officially honored at our Salute to Teachers in November at the Music Academy of the West. So a final round of applause and congratulations for Greg. All right, turning it over now to Madam Chair.
Get pictures uh, in here or just outside? Okay, so we need the port. It's a recess, but you cannot leave. And then all of the recipients, okay. And we are now ten-minute recess. Penitent's report.
All right, thank you. And thank you so much for that celebration. So much to the recipients, so appreciate the time on the agenda today and very, very happy to celebrate.
It's why we're here.
That's right.
For the party.
That's right. All right, so I'll jump right into the superintendent's report. Um, let me pause first and I, I know that I made some comments that we will be providing additional information, so I'll do that, but see if there are questions within the report. Mr. Porter.
If I may, my apologies, I need to try to ask you ahead of time.
Sure, absolutely.
So um, under student enrollment in our schools and programs, Special Ed Preschool.
Yes.
Uh, since the beginning of the year, the numbers have increased by 50%. Is that typical, just because during the year you have more assessments and?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, it is typical um, in terms of that increase. And also, it points to the difficulty of staffing classrooms when you start with one set of numbers and it increases your continually right sizing classrooms. So, but anyway, to your question, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other particular questions that you might have? Happy to answer. Happy to answer. And then I'll point out a few items. All right, I'll go ahead and point out a few items then, and many we've covered earlier today. The way I formatted this month's report was more the general comments or organization-specific at the top and then more division-oriented as we go. So, a general comment related to the Chamber of Commerce State of Education, San Ray Valley. Really excited to be there and to see many of you there. Wanted to say that a bit about Glenn Morris, who's the executive director, CEO of the Chamber, phenomenal partner for us at SB CEO. And he's really leaned in to helping us with partners in education, for example, finding internship hosts in the Santa Maria Valley for students to be interns in the North County. So I say that because he's been instrumental in that in that work, and he's asked his staff to work on that as well. He also is very supportive of our career technical education department and works very closely with Noel Barfelt and Deborah Hood for teacher industry tours for teachers. So, finding businesses, having teachers tour those businesses so that we can think about how our students can be ready in those careers. So just want to say thank you to Glenn Morris. He and I serve on the Workforce Development Board. I'm new to the board. I haven't I haven't been on it for very long. But there's a new director, Louis Servin is the director for the Workforce Development Board. And really interesting perspective about workforce needs and industry sectors in Santa Barbara County. And I was thinking for a future board meeting, it might be nice to invite him and provide a very short, not very short, but a concise briefing over some of the findings that he's had now that he's been in that role for about a year. So, I think people, I think there was thunder up there. Did you hear the thunder? I think there's agreement in that. I'll take that as an eye. All right, so that was one announcement. The second announcement has to do on page two, the Santa Barbara County School Safety Coalition. And really, this is something that Bridget Boblitz and I have been working on very closely. Kami Barnwell is becoming more integral in that space as well. And as I shared last month, this is an evolving concept that now it's becoming more solidified. And so I wanted to share with you what's gelling around a Santa Barbara County School Safety Coalition. Safety is always a priority. We've said that for as long as schools have been in existence. It just seems to be, we have to be in a position of being as prepared as can be and on the same page as can be. And so we feel that the timing is right, the people, the place is right sincerely with people from around the county, education, staff and law enforcement, first responders, all kinds of individuals are really saying, yes, let's be a part of this coalition, we're calling it. So, I'm thinking of it as a multi-dimensional, you know, one of those stars where there's many, many points on the star that comes together on this. And so some of the points are in the bullets below, including hiring a school safety liaison. Again, as I said in the notes, titles are shifting and not exactly sure if that'll be the title, but a school safety liaison. We've spoken with the sheriff's department. We're leaning into hiring an individual that will be employed by the sheriff's department. So it'll be an individual who can navigate the sheriff's as well as other police department jurisdictions, but then will work with them in schools. It's very similar to when Susan Klein Rothschild was our public health liaison. It's that kind of a model. And what Craig Bonner, the undersheriff, and we have said, and it was his, he was really insistent that when you go to hire an individual like this, it's so important that you have your people as the interview panel versus us saying, here's who you're going to have. So really appreciate that partnership. That's one piece of the star. Another point is to have a few workshops. I say that this way because workshops are helpful, but they're not the thing. Workshops are helpful. They help you in learning, but they also convene people and build relationships across the county with multiple organizations so that you know each other when you need to lean on each other. So there's about two workshops formulating. This is in partnership with the FBI, law enforcement, county behavioral wellness and mental wellness supports as prevention and understanding as one piece. And then let's work on safety plans. You know, let's roll up our sleeves and get our plans to work. So that's another part. A third piece of the star components here are countywide common language for emergencies. This need not be complicated. It could be what San Mateo calls the big five. And the big five, just off the top, I won't do it all, but it'll be shelter in place, lockdown, it'll be, you know, what you call certain things can be called the certain things countywide. So that we know that we'll take, we'll take the valley, for example. We use the Teacher of the Year to inspire the valley. But when you have a student who goes from college, school district or Vista into San Diego High School, if they have had different language from Vista or college, then you call it something else at San Diego. It doesn't really have that cohesive, it doesn't make sense. Why make it complicated? Let's make it more simple. So, that's another component. And then the fourth component, and maybe, and definitely not final component, is in order to do this well, we need to have the structure and organizational support. We have to have a commitment for that. And so what we've asked, I've asked Bridget to consider under educational services of which she has accepted is to say, we'll do, we'll partner in ed services. Bridget and her evolving team and growing team actually will support the work. And the school liaison will report to ed services. And this is a support for public schools, private schools, charter schools. And what we so appreciate is that when the undersheriff and law enforcement and others have, and the district attorney and others have said yes, they're saying yes to coming to the workshops, they're saying yes to the common language. I mean, we're really, really wanting to do all we can to have an approach that isn't complete panic, you know, which is part of the spectrum and can happen. It feels like you, we really need to go quickly. Of course we do, it's very urgent. And also be just waiting for, waiting, we can't wait either. So, right in the middle is where we're hovering here. So let me stop there. That's a lot of the summary and components. There's a lot more details that we've been working on and really appreciate the support, Bridget, with you and your team. Let me see if there's any questions on this. Yes.
First of all, thank you, Bridget. Thank you Superintendent Salsito for working on this. As you mentioned, this is very timely in terms of preventative thoughtful measures around safety. My question is in regards to the actual components of what will be included and under the safety umbrella and for example, aspects of natural disasters and response to that, gun violence, et cetera, et cetera. So, is that, has that been determined or is that to be determined and how will it be if it's not so far?
If I may respond, and Bridget, welcome to you. It hasn't yet been defined with bold lines and parameters yet, which I actually appreciate. You know, all of this, to me, it's as meaningful as it is meaningful to the members of this coalition. So for example, when we said, if we set making it up quarterly meetings to do X, Y, Z, if it doesn't make sense to do that anymore, well, one, we could do once a month, one, we could do twice a year. So we've got to be malleable, I think, flexible. But to your question around the definitions and what's under safety, such a great question. And I feel like at this point, we have to, it's like there's such a Venn diagram around what is included. It can't be, oh, that's not my role. But it also, I don't know that we can do it all either. So there has to be a balance there. So, I really appreciate your question. It isn't solidified yet, and I think what we'll do is take the question back because your question will very likely be one on others' minds as well. Thank you for that. Other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Howell?
In the first paragraph, you mentioned it, and it really jumped out at me that, you know, public, charter, private, then law enforcement, first responders, external. I immediately think back to all the issues with the debris flow and what county ed did in coordinating. And it was one of those issues that affected the private schools identically to public school. And that's not obvious. And the fact that this is including those outside agencies, which I'm sure they welcome, the public charter and private, I think it's wonderful and I hope, I'm sure once decisions are made, information is going to be communicated to the schools and hopefully going to be communicated to the public because it's just incredibly valuable effort. And I just think there's so few, everybody has what they're focused on, meaning they ignore other things. And having public charter and private, everybody on the same page, I think is terrific. So applaud the group for that.
I would just like to add and underscore some of what Joe said about having everybody on the same page. If anything taught us a lesson, it was the school shooting in Texas where there was a total breakdown in the communication and the coordination between the different agencies in resolving that situation. And I, I just couldn't support anything more than the need to pull all of the resources together and have them on the same page. That is just so critical. And thank you, Bridget. And thank you, Susan. And go for it.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. You know, when we were talking a moment ago, we were sharing about the Teacher of the Year and highest honors and highest responsibilities, which is very, very true. And here too, it just, it feels like a really must-do, but also must-do really well. Because a breakdown in communication or breakdown in supports, you know, would be really, we could fill in many, many, what that would just, how it would feel and be. Having said that, just taking the schools, for example, the seven of you and all of you know very well, school districts and school systems, and there's a superintendent, and then the law enforcement also has its own ecosystem, very different than a school system. And so the complexity is very diverse and challenging. So I, we are going for this. It's probably why that organizational structure shifts and ongoing efforts, right fit sustainability, so important that we keep a finger on a pulse. A Santa Barbara County School Safety Liaison, if they're supporting 125 just public schools, what does that look like? So I say that because we are really taking this seriously, but also wanting to not let that stop us from starting. And then we're, so we're, we've been really wanting to and have gotten feedback and input as along the way. So superintendents now, the 20 we've met, they're in, we're meeting, going to be meeting with private schools, you know, in other words, we're going down the line and making sure that we're all saying yes, because it takes a commitment to make this go well. So, thank you. All right, so Imad Nari, you have the, thank you for the contributions. And we'll make sure that if you aren't able to be there in person to see the action, we'll make that, take photos and share those with you. So thank you so much. AB906 will be the second to the last comment I have. So AB906 was the, the board generously signed that resolution and it was very important. Michelle DeWard, thank you so much for reporting on it and being so active in it. I won't repeat what you shared. What I will say is, I think, this is the first time, not I think, I know, this is the first time in decades that the county education school, juvenile court and community schools has been so vigorously debated and talked about at the state level. So I have hope that there'll be some movement in the future. And so the minimum, that the conversation is happening, that the programs are being illuminated and that there's an acknowledgement that there's a need for a shift in the funding model is excellent. So from here, we just go forward. I would like to also report on the meeting between the Santa Barbara County Education Office and Santa Barbara County Probation. I shared with you last time that we would be meeting and we did. And I want to share with you, just to set the table, who was there? Holly Benton, who's the new chief probation officer. Tiffany Phillips, the deputy probation officer, who's there every day at the facility, Juvenile Justice Center. Samuel Leach, who's the deputy chief probation officer from their team. Our side, we brought together Bridget Boblitz, Kirsten Escobedo, Mari Baptista, Rene Wheeler, Austin Payne and myself. And so we all huddled at the Juvenile Justice Center. The three main areas that we were wanting to discuss and did discuss were related to instructional time for the students, really protecting that instructional time for the students. Secondly, instructional time specifically for students with individual education plans, special education, very, very important. And then third, safety, safety around students, our employees and their employees. And we walked away, we debriefed afterwards, and we all felt very optimistic, very good after this meeting, sincerely. It was really a heart-to-heart. We didn't actually, having not much time for the meeting, made us go, you know, just go right to it. And so we felt very optimistic. And one of the reasons we felt very optimistic is what we found over time is that there's been a loosening and fuzziness around roles and responsibilities. This is a partnership with probation and school staff and many others. We really need to know who's doing what, who's, you know, who's supporting behavior? Who's supporting education? So, we agreed to define that again together. And it's less about the plan itself, but I think it'll be the planning itself that'll be really important. So, there were agreements to make those planning sessions happen, and I feel really good about them. I'm seeing that, those calendared now. I think a challenge amongst many is that I believe this will be a slow and evolving process. And one of the challenges, I cannot emphasize this enough, is that the behaviors within the Juvenile Justice Center are unlike any, any school that we've ever seen and known. And so, the supports that our students need, mental wellness, social support, educational, they're living there. We've got to ensure that there's hope and support, inspiration, education, and that we're preparing students to enter into post juvenile court and community schools, whether it's back to their school districts or whether it's in the society. We have, you see the numbers, it's very small. However, with an array of ages, an array of reasons as to why our students are in Juvenile Justice Center, it's very complicated. So I say that because while we have absolute optimism, we also have realistic expectations of this taking some time. So, I wanted you to know that. And we're going to meet again June 7th with the same team. Austin, I want to give you a little support on that one, so it'll be okay. But Austin's helping in the background for sure. Mr. Porter.
It behooves us to remember that the population's very different now.
Correct.
Than what we used to have. Very, very different level of fans or behavior, or whatever it may be.
Yes.
Which should trigger changes anyway.
Right.
And how we're thinking about it and what we're going to do. So, I salute you for bringing everybody together to work through that.
Thank you very much, and I absolutely diddow and say yes to your reflection on the shifts today than five years ago, four years ago even. Very, very different. My last announcement then, or just I want to share a resource, is what Anna will be sharing right here with you. Let me send one out to Austin as well. This will be posted on our website soon, but I wanted to, let me, let me wait, let me wait till you receive them and then I'll talk about it. You all see it, yes?
To see this. Anna knows, when I first got on the board, I asked her for an org chart with the names for SB CEO, Ministry of Offices. We didn't have pictures, but she did a darn good blow chart on it. We didn't have pictures, but she did a darn good blow chart on it. And now to see this, this is great.
Oh, good. Well, thank you. I don't know if I need to even present on it. I think that's a really great feedback. And, um, so on one side, you'll see many, many faces. And let me just describe so that you really have it, um, here as to why there's even a, a wave. From alphabetical Ballard, Blockman, et cetera, that's how they're organized. And I think the information that we're providing is what often comes up as questions, frequently asked questions. So for example, what kind of district? Is it TK to six? Is it all, that only high school? Is it TK to 12? So there's that information. Enrollment information, um, how many schools? So if you look at Santa Maria Benita, it'll show 21 schools and enrollment at 16, over 16,000. If you go to Kuyama, you'll see two schools in enrollment at 181. So you, you see different, just the variation. After the first waves, one, two, three, four columns in, the first wave underneath that are the charter school leads. And then the final wave is, um, is me. So say it's me. As, as a, as a colleague across the county. And then on the backside, you'll see, um, our, our cabinet team, um, in divisions so that people could identify each of the associate superintendents, the nonprofit leaders, our communications, um, director and North County liaison with representative duties as well. So it's a way to orient the counties and districts as well as our organization in, so people can put a face to the name. Let's go forward. This will be on our website and, um, we're, we'll be distributing those. Oh, what I wanted to say, this is, says draft 313. Well, sure enough, there's a change. Sure enough, there's a change. April, sorry, January, February, March 13th till now, there's a change on the cabinet side. A lovely picture of Mari, no longer Min Harris Baptista. Mari is now Mari Gonzalez. She, she got married. Yes. Yay. Yes. So therefore a new draft to follow. All right. With that, thank you for indulging me in a longer presentation today. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And at this point, if I can find where I am. Where am I? Oh. Yes. Is that, okay. We did that, we did that, we did that. Is this right? No, that wasn't it. Oh, there we go. No. I'm missing a page. Oh, I'm missing a page. Hold on a second. I'll get organized here sometime. Oh, I know where it went. Thank you. It takes a village. Okay. Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I'm back with this now. The consent agenda, um, consisting of the minutes, minutes from our last board meeting, registration of credentials, um, and acceptance of donations, declaration of surplus and issuance of high school graduation diplomas. I, before we even move second whatever on the issuance of high school graduation diplomas, I, I want to reach out to Joe Howell again and thank him so much. He writes letters to each one of the graduates, not just this time, but every time. And that, I know from the letters that they write, um, receiving a letter back from you would mean a lot to think that somebody is really paying attention. And Joe, that's, that's wonderful. If for nothing else, you deserve man of the year. And then, uh, I would like to ask.
Just to comment on that, I, one of the reasons is, uh, I, I like doing it, but I've got to imagine the students, it's like, oh, you got to do one more thing. So they have to do one more thing. And then it's clearly there is, uh, teacher or counselor assistance, they're very well-written. I can't imagine any one of us writing a letter that quality first draft. So a lot goes into it, I know. So to me, I just want them to know that the first paragraph says, we all read every one and we do. And, and so I, I think, I try and say more than that, but I think hopefully they understand that they're not just checking another box, but everybody's paying attention.
Exactly. Exactly. And I believe, um, Nadra, did you want to, did you have some comments you wanted to make on that?
I just wanted to say again, thank you, uh, remember Howell, for your dedication and for writing, um, the letters to every individual, um, graduate because making sure that they're recognized and that they know that we're reading, these are really important. And in addition to, um, add to that, I thought that it would be nice to send cards that we could all sign to them. To add to the individual letters, nothing can take away from that, uh, the intention and the care and, um, the time that you put into those individual letters. But I just, I, I just thought maybe a card with everyone's signature, with everyone's personalized message of congratulations could complement, um, complement that. So I have, um, with me a few cards. We, yes, I just happened to have with me, courtesy of Superintendent Solsito. And for our graduates, uh, this round, Jorge and Manuel. And so just before we leave the board meeting today, if we can all just sign our personalized message and, and we can get that out to them, uh, just as that little added touch.
That's a, a very good idea. Everyone likes to get real mail because we get so little of it today, that to get something that's really addressed to us and not to occupant or resident or whatever, I think that's, and of course, that's completely voluntary, uh, for the board members, but I hope that I will try to remind us to stop by and see you and do that. Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a move in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 16, the recommended approval of the 2223 single plan for student achievement, juvenile court and community schools, which is a mouthful and a lot of trees to approve the report. Rather than have a, a full-blown presentation on this, I, I would like to suggest that if any board members have specific questions about this report, Renee Wheeler is here and would be happy to answer them. So are there any questions? Any comments? I think we're overwhelmed. Okay.
Renee, that was an immense amount of work. Gathering information with the parents and so I appreciate the effort and the time that you put into this report.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. A lot of boxes and lines to fill in. Definitely. Yes.
Um, and one of the things that really struck me recently, um, going to the Teacher of the Year, um, candidates and going into the classrooms and being able to speak with the, the teachers is the importance of the relationship. And it's, it's as important, if not more important than the actual curriculum. And so, um, that is, that's the perspective and the lens that I look through a lot of the information that, um, we receive. And I was really, uh, happy to see that, um, that communicated and, um, the information, which was immense and a task within itself to be able to deliver all that information and, and give us the, the stats on where all the individual students, um, are in terms of the, the qualifications. But in addition to that, just the care, um, that the staff, uh, took with all of these different achievement levels and how they address them and how they really focused on, um, the different types of stra- strategies that would work for them and building that relationship. I was really happy to see that. So thank you for that.
All right. I need a motion to, uh, approve. I'm not going to say all that again. Item 16.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Bruce. Second, Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the plan?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we have a recommended, recommended approval of allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions for the juvenile court and community skills and special education. This is something I believe we talked about at our last board meeting, the fact that we, January 10th, uh, and actually one of the school account, um, court schools, Los Robles, we had to, um, also do March 14th and also Hollister, uh, um, closure of the classes that was ca- caused by, um, an emergency declaration and conditions that were going on. Do I have any, do I have a motion to approve the, um, approval of the allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions on those dates in schools?
Move approval?
Maggie, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This was the form that I've had you all sign before the meeting when you didn't know what it was. You are so trusting. Thank you so much. Okay. Now, number 18, this is something we've been kind of kicking around and talking about for a while, so I'm glad to see it here. We have a recommended approval of lease renewals for program and office spaces and there's, um, some attachments to look at. The superintendent recommends these approvals and at this time though, I would like to call up our Director of Facilities, Mary Beth Gallus, um, who will provide further details about this document, which is new.
Thank you. In your, um, board package, you had an earlier version of this document and we're committed to refining it and updating it. And we're doing so up until just before this meeting, the information in your board package was accurate, but we really wanted to show apples to apples, um, what the, the leases and the MOUs amount to on a monthly basis, um, what that turns into on an annual level, because a lot of our market comparisons come to us, um, in an annual rate comparison. So that is, um, there's the revised copy that's dated today, that'll be included with the minutes and you have that before you. We have been working busily, working with our associate superintendents and our, uh, real estate industry partners, trying to gather this data and to get, to build connections in the community so that as space needs arise, we're able to, um, address them timely and efficiently.
Mary Beth Gallus. The new document that, that you're just receiving as, uh, Mary Beth has described, the only new area is been, has been highlighted. So the additional column, okay, great. And then a strike through on a name. So other, other than that, everything's the same. Correct? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
So going forward, we're committed, um, as discussed previously, we'll be working with the board to approve, obtain consideration and approval for future leases. This list will continue to change and grow and, um, will really be a capture that, um, can provide a snapshot at any given time and, and will provide a history of sort of where we've been and where we're at. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or we're happy to reflect any other suggestions for inclusions on future versions.
A question, not on any one specific, but just in general, when you're comparing, when you pick an annual market price to use as a comparison to the annual lease price, um, some of these facilities I know have leasehold improvements or whatever you want to call in them. But are you able to reflect that really in the annual market price or is the annual market price just really the bare lease square footage and the annual lease price is improved property, shall I say?
That's a great question. So we looked at a variety of properties that would suit the needs for a similar type facility, um, where we were able to choose from multiple similar pro- uh, properties in an area. We collected all the properties that were comparable at the, at that time. And one of the things, um, that we need to keep in mind is some of the space we have, like an existing preschool, um, the numbers, um, reflect the lease space for interior space. You know, an average classroom is like 960 square feet, K-12. So if you see 660 square feet or 880 square feet, that's smaller than your average K-12 classroom. So we're benefiting with, um, from that space without paying for the, the, um, outdoor space. It's just included as, as a value add to our agreement, which is a tremendous inclusion because, um, for a, um, opportunity like an existing preschool that's, um, compliant for serving the public, um, the space requirement indoor for a, a child, I think is 35 square feet. Exterior, they want, I think, 75 square feet of play space per child. So when we look retail or commercial, um, we need to find properties that offer us the opportunity to maybe do TIs where we might fence in and tear up some parking spaces to make a play yard. There would be more one-time expenses and tenant improvements, but this was a comparable rate for facilities that are currently on the market that might fit the bill, didn't do visits, but, um, we pulled this together since last meeting. But I think that, um, these were rates absent common area maintenance. We weren't looking at properties that had a significant demand for cams. It was what we were able to pull up internally since the last meeting. And I think, um, we can work with some of our real estate partners, um, to maybe even refine this going forward.
Thank you.
It may be evident to everyone else, but it's not to me. Item number three, six and seven, don't indicate a cycle. And is that by intent or is that under negotiation right now?
No, I would defer to Kirsten, um, directly and she isn't here today. We gathered a lot of this information from her program managers, but I think where it isn't included, um, the, they were terminating at the end of the year and then they've, they've been traditionally been renegotiated. It didn't have a renewal clause written into the agreement. And I don't know what her plans on the horizon are or the plans for those locations.
Thank you. Maybe future, maybe you could tell us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Solsito, did you have anything you wanted to comment on this or?
Well, thank you. We're, we're want, this is a, a first go and obviously even evolved since the printing of the documents and we'll want to come back to the board with future leases as well and information. The, uh, let's make sure that we're all on the same page on this one. The, the request is since the leases are terming out, they would renew, we wanted the board to have the ability to, um, act and approve or disapprove of these as we go forward. So that's why these have all come forward, they're at that ending period of the cycle. Is that correct, Mary Beth?
Correct.
All right. Perfect. All right. Thank you.
I am looking for a motion to recommend approval of these lease renewals. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
In a second. Further discussion? Further discussion? Knowing that this schedule will be coming back to us periodically. All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mary Beth, thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you very much.
We've been looking for this for a while.
Because I know this is out of process, but I did want to say one thing on the budget side, just on the budget side. So the programs that you see here, special education or preschool, those are budgeted within their division budgets. And so they're not, um, SB CEO general fund co- contributions. I, I say that because it's part of their program to budget for leases and rents as they're using space throughout the county. I wanted you to, wanted you to know. Thank you.
And Mary Beth, that might be something that we could designate on here as whose, whose budget the money comes out of? Yeah, that would be great. Okay, that has passed. And now we are recommending adoption of the resolution proclaiming Teacher Appreciation Week, National School Nurses Day, National Speech Pathologist-
Need one?
I need one. Where is one when you need it? National Speech Pathologist Day and Classified School Employee Week. The superintendent is recommending adoption of, this is a resolution. So we will call for a- Thank you. And we have a second now roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Carty?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany? Mrs. Dany?
Thank you.
Mrs. DeWort?
Aye.
Ms. Erman?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Excellent.
Now, item twenty, reimburse expenses for board members to attend the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce State of Education event on May ninth. Um, and it would, the board will consider whether to improve this or not. Whenever there's a county meeting addressing state of education, if it's of this nature, um, it would also come before the board to approve reimbursement of expenses to register to attend for any board member. Any comments? Well, I need a motion. Come on. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And discussion? I could tell. I just had a question. And how mu- what is the expense? It was thirty-five dollars for me to register as a non-Chamber of Commerce member, but as an educator. And so if you're a Chamber of Commerce member, it's, I think it's free, but it's, yeah, thirty-five. And then if you're not, it's forty-five for this one. This is a breakfast. All right, any other comments, questions? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, whoops. Blip, blip. Oh, one abstention. Okay. And it passes my majority. All right. Next, number twenty-one, reimburse expenses for board members to attend SB CEO education celebration. This is on May eleventh. And we all know what this event is about. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Discussion? Sure. I don't know. It's fifty-five dollars. Yes. All right, any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we have a, an issue with, please get out your calendars. Please. Uh, we have a little bit of a challenge on our June second meeting, which is the, um, preliminary budget meeting that we have to do in June. It was originally scheduled for June eighth and we need to move that. So I'm gonna start with proposing June sixth, which is Tuesday of that week.
What time will it be? Same time?
Ten o'clock. I hear something down here too? Yeah. All right, so we'd be missing two. Then another date we could consider would be Friday, the ninth. Is that also in the morning? Yeah. Yes.
Mr. DeWort, did you say no or?
Yes, okay.
So we'd be missing Maggie, but that's all. And obviously, if you're gone all week, you would be gone on Tues- uh-
The fifth, Monday, the fifth is-
Monday, the fifth. Yeah. That one would need to be in the afternoon. So back to two o'clock on that Monday, the fifth. So Maggie, you'd be gone. Anyone else on the fifth in the afternoon? If not, I would prefer to have it the ninth in the morning. If that would be all right with everyone?
If you were best guess, Howard?
I don't think we'll have a lot of things on the agenda.
The, there are four items on the agenda at this point. It is, will be, uh, action on the board on the local control accountability plan that will have been presented the week before. An action on the budget, which have been presented the week before. A, uh, brief presentation on local indicators for the local control accountability plan support. And then our support for differentiated assistance, um, throughout the county. So there's four items that are traditional and have to be separated from the meeting. First meeting in June, yes. So yes, I believe it should be an hour or, or less.
Okay. All right, and I'm going to propose that we meet on June ninth. No, yeah, ninth at ten o'clock. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
All those- Now we're raining over here. Yeah, Bruce got excited. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes uni- unanimously. Our second meeting in June will be Friday, the ninth at ten AM. Um, give or take, yeah. Okay, item number twenty-three, as I had said when we were talking about changes to the agenda, the inter-district appeal has been pulled. There's an item that came up that a part of that, but since it's ten after four, I think we'll carry this forward as a topic for a future meeting.
May I mention the topic?
Yes, absolutely.
And I know that, uh, the topic is on district of choice.
Right.
Um, the, the college school district, in this case, not going forward, of course, as the appeal, but is a district of choice, one of two in Santa Barbara County? So perhaps at a future meeting, we can describe what that means. What does it mean to be a district of choice? And, and also, secondly, how might it impact an appeal process when somebody is trying to, a family is, is seeking, um, to, uh, enter into that district or exit to a different district?
Yeah. I, I think it would be better to do that at a, at a future meeting.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, maybe we'll do that on June ninth.
I have no idea of how and why it was pulled, but I'm giving credit to Anna and Renee. Thank you.
Whatever magic you worked. Yeah, I, I think it would be really great for the board to be, um, prepped on district of choice, what it means, who it is, how it would operate, and how it might affect our discussion before we have an IDT to, uh, consider, especially if it's open. An open one that we wouldn't have to take the time to do it at that point. So does that sound reasonable to everyone? Everyone okay with that? All right, then that's gonna go on our agenda for future meetings. Twenty-four is the personnel report, which is here for information. Any future agenda items? We've discussed the one. And I'm looking for a motion to-
Madam Chair, so, so sorry. Between me and the adjournment. A very, very near future agenda item is happening right upstairs at four-thirty, the Poetry Slam. So I invite the county board to stop in. Um, you, you need not stay for the entire event, but we'd love to have you. Four-thirty to six o'clock, Poetry Slam upstairs. Very future, uh, near future agenda item. So thank you.
Like in fifteen minutes. Thank you for mentioning that. That's great. All right, um, if there's any further comments, um, please indicate. Otherwise, I'm ready for a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to leave. Do I get second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.